I will now call the order of this. For, I'm sorry, May 6th, 2022, regular workshop of the Midfield School Committee. I'll begin with a roll call of the committee and then I'll ask the other advisors here to introduce themselves. Um, so first I will go with you, Leo.
Joe Brennan here.
Thank you, Leo.
Tim Knight here.
Michelle Kirksey here.
Okay, and Jessica Wright here. I expect Anna Ocean Brook to be here shortly. And then, since we are remote, Michael, since you're here, just kind of advisor to.
So Michael and Jessica.
And.
Steve Callahan.
Okay, and I have asked Steve here to kind of represent the perspective of the warrant committee. When making their, you know, kind of overview around this and then.
I'm Carolyn Casey.
I'm Casey and we have asked Carolyn here to, or a member of the bylaw committee here. To kind of again advise us on their perspectives they went through. So the single agenda item today within this workshop forum, which is generally a less formal forum. Than a regular school committee meeting is to really discuss some current concerns. And the gift of time that we have a little bit, although it's unfortunate that the ATM didn't make quorum. If you're out there, please attend the ATM on Monday. But we really wanted to talk a little bit about. What our thoughts are about the. Well, generally around Article 14, specifically around what the school committee. Responsibilities, appointments and other concerns we might have in terms of process. You know, not necessarily disagreeing with the, the structure, I think. I'm going to put that out to the rest of the committee, but in terms of how we're able to appoint. Our members or our kind of appointees. I think we have some concern that there's not. A position there that is a facilities and operations manager for schools in general as a voting or non-voting. And that I want to make sure that, that we're all clear on how. There are certain terms defined, right? So I think we've kind of cleared up school project, but I want to make sure that we go through and see that. And if the. The concerns about full-time employees and concerns about conflict of interest and things like that. As I was going through doing a training, as I do every year on conflict of interest. What we have put into this file is so much more stringent than what the state itself requires. That perhaps we're hogtied ourselves a little bit in the effort to make transparency. Is it actually transparency or is it simply fallout from this one process and should we be codifying? Back for perpetuity, you know, around one process as opposed to looking at. Piece of the article that would be here forever, as long as the town of Midfield stands, or if we end up having. Finding that this kind of ties our hands a little bit, not just for the committee, but for the town, I think it's worthwhile discussion. And. Does that remain, are we ending up having this? Bylaw come up next year each week, which is not a small thing, right? Like when you write a bylaw. And I think, and I truly do say this, I, I think you have had a huge charge. That. You accomplished in a pretty short time and I admire it. If I had to sit down and write this. It would be. It would be a huge, huge task and I do understand. We were on the school committee for quite some time, so. You, you also understand like kind of plugging your way through these things and writing policies. Difficult. So given that, I think what I would ask is if. All of you kind of elucidate. It's okay, come on in. I think the seat here is fine. Anna Ocean Brook just joined us in the meeting. And you missed my preamble, which is basically, I was about to ask. The committee if they could kind of bring their concerns. About the bylaw itself in specific, in specific to the school committee part, we'll go from there. So that we can talk a little bit about what our, our concerns are around being able to form. So. Michelle, do you want to start? Cause I know that you were one of the people who's come to me.
Yeah, sure. Um, hi. So I guess I feel like starting very open-ended. I have the article from last year's town meeting. And I feel when I read the article that the town approved and I look at the bylaw that's being proposed. One seems to focus a little bit more on. Inclusivity, right? And the bylaw proposed seems to. Kind of prohibit that, I guess. So I'm wondering.
Logistically or like, i- is it like logistics, like in terms of like logically?
Yes.
To include this, you exclude that. Okay.
Yeah, you're preventing, you're preventing, you're, you're going to actually be preventing people from being able to.
Carolyn not.
Correct.
The bylaw.
Correct.
Much.
The bylaw might prevent people from being able to do that. So I guess my, like kind of more open-ended question is. What do you feel with kind of the general spirit or intent around?
Around the school committee selections?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I want to make sure, I just want to make sure, where are we talking about Article 14?
Yeah.
Two, okay, because there was two and that's what I was saying, you were talking.
Binding to.
I, I was, I was just confused with the opening remarks though. Around. What they may be able to be and not be. You're talking about the four commitment appointments from the school committee? Or we are talking about it?
Yes.
Sorry. And what the constraints are around that.
Would it help if I gave an overview to start?
I would love to actually.
This, just.
I mean, some of us are kind of getting this and then some of us.
Yeah. So you want, yeah, just make sure you have the editing.
We have a current version.
So, um. Let me just say to begin with, it was an incredibly short timeframe. It was a month. And we, because of schedules could, you know, just do once a week meetings. So having had more time, obviously the appropriate path is to vet it, right? Come to all the concerned parties and you, you vet it. We just didn't have time. We had to get it in the warrant.
Right.
And then afterwards, the warrant committee did invite us, which was great. We spent over two hours. You know, wordsmithing and some more editing. So, but what we started with is the idea that. We wanted to get as many people involved in committee, in the community as we could. So we wanted to tap into as many different pieces as we could. More people get involved. Better success for a school building project. I also will tell you that. How to make a school building committee is not a new problem. And I know people keep thinking connected to what just happened, but it really isn't because.
Less data. It's okay. I mean.
Yeah, when I joined the school committee in the nineties, the, we had problems putting together a school building committee. So. So what we tried to do is we got three appointing authorities. So that people wouldn't say left out a piece of the moderator, you guys and the select board. And we gave them equal number of appointments. And then we sat and thought about. Who would you like or need in a committee? And then we tried to sort of map out, you know, different people for each pointing authority with a lot of leeway. So for instance, for you, it's two school committee members and then two other people who you think are appropriate. We put down with educational experience, it's possible. We did not say had to be. But we figured you would be the most likely body. To be able to do that. And then one of the edits was. We wrote down qualifications in terms of building that comes under the select board.
Right.
Not that you couldn't also pick someone with that experience or the moderator couldn't. But we didn't say on the first round. You know, she was a permanent building committee member. And we didn't say that because we were a little concerned about someone being overworked. That you might be building a fast center and a school and how does a person do both of those?
And I think we.
And then you guys get it. So, but then we met with the warrant committee. You know, they were very clear and I, and I agree with them. In the end, they said, if you don't say there needs to be. Someone might think there's not supposed to be, and that was not our intent. So we put in a minimum of one permanent building committee member. So, you know, they might end up being two or three or. However, the three different appointing authorities think. So those are the 12 voting members. You definitely need other people there. So last one, we listed out like superintendent designated needs and superintendent says you want facilities person there. You bring your facilities person. The town administrator, same thing for them. They want some, you know, the facilities person here or some finance person, then, then they bring those people.
They bring those people in addition to the, or that they, so if Jeff were to say, I would really want a school building. You know, kind of operations and facilities expert on there, he would then have to replace himself.
So it's interesting you say that.
We, because I think that both of those things are kind of important. So how do we make that?
Yeah.
How we flesh that part out, those two issues.
So I, so I'd have to ask the committee.
Yeah.
You know, that as a group, speaking myself, I just assume superintendent would bring somebody who would help at that particular meeting they needed. Right? And it says principal or principals, because it may be it's two buildings. Or you might have a principal and a vice principal in, in like a high school, you want both those people. So we assume that. You know, these are non-voting members, but definitely people you need.
So they would be adjunct, it would be essentially as, as needed.
As needed, exactly.
My, my, I think one of the concerns that we had is that. A school operations and facilities building experts maybe within the school would always be.
Needed.
Needed at every meeting. So then you end up having a committee of like 12 voting members and. Then you end up having a committee of 12 voting members, but four, five, 10. And that person also, you know, in the case of Michael, is a full-time public, like full-time employee.
Right, but he's not voting.
But he would not be voting.
Right.
Okay, and.
So he's offering all the support, the consultant, the information that, that group is going to need.
But he would be. Impaneled, he could potentially be impaneled as a member, but not as part of the voting membership. So he could be a part of the debate, but in the end. And he could be on the school building committee, but in the end he would not be able to vote.
Correct.
Same thing with Dr. Marsden or any other school employee.
Right.
Or any other town employee. So.
Right, there's only 12 voting members and it takes so many to make a quorum.
And. And so. I hadn't come to that yet myself, I think that's.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, please.
If we do get accepted to the MSBA process.
Right.
That's all. It's.
Yeah.
One of the requirements, and I could be absolutely wrong, but you know, this is, I've done three other projects. Is that they require someone who's MCTPO certified. So I do think part of the language should reflect that one of the appointees from the committee has to have an MCTPO certification. Cause that is one of the requirements if you get accepted.
Right, so Marcherall looked at it several times and he, he has a line in there that.
He actually added a paragraph to deal with that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a fail-safe paragraph that says if, if the MSBA comes back and says you have to have. You know, you're missing these two people. The selectmen have the ability to appoint them.
Yeah.
Hey, Michael, could you actually? Tell us what an NC.
Massachusetts Certified Public. Preparatory officer.
Okay, so is that someone, you know, even though we say it's initials and we say it's the MSBA that would be required to have that. Is that indeed someone that at baseline you would simply? Want on your school building committee if you were to be building?
Well, I, I mean, my personal opinion, yes, because you can't stop any process or like if, if you're going to go out to big for. Quest for proposals, right?
Right.
Quest for.
Even if it had nothing to do with the MSBA.
You, in order to procure, in order to advertise, you have to have. And we've, and we do in the district, several people in the district that have that certification. That, that's the person that the state will go. Through. Through.
To get all of those.
All the curators. So, you know, in the, in the old process, so the whole committee. There was myself, there was Christine.
Experience.
There was Amy, there was different, yeah, there's different people. So.
Right.
So, you know, with the process staff, you have to procure a, a project manager, right? The MSBA is not getting involved with that ahead of time, right? So what, what they do and they don't, but there has to be someone within the district that can procure that. Excuse me, project manager. Once you have the project manager on, correct? Then they take the road to hire an architect.
So they become the.
So also, so then all that paperwork goes funnels through the project manager. But prior to having a project manager on, you have to have someone to configure who's certified. Does that make sense?
Yes, that does make sense. So, so that could be a different role within the town. It doesn't necessarily have to be you. Or not even you, anybody who happens to be in your township.
Right.
All, but, but you know, I do believe, and that's why I asked the question is. The MS, the MSBA does require that someone on that committee has a certification. Cause then, like I said, whoever the project manager is that takes over the project. They also have to have a certified procurement officer to move forward.
So the paragraph is, is. On page 42 of that actual warrant. So it's actually. P. 1C. So. It's under, it's actually, it's under the non-voting members. Okay, it's the last paragraph under that non-voting member. It says such additional members to be appointed by the Board of Selectment, including without limitation, a current member of the Board of Selectment. And to the extent the same became, become required in order to obtain funding of the Mass General. Chapter 70B. So that's, that's kind of the fail-sakes.
Yeah.
Language that, that Mark thought was important to have.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's the fail-safe, but what's the optimal kind of position to have there? And I think that's one of the things that, you know, like.
You know, a, a, again, if you have someone from the permanent building committee. There were a couple of people that have permanent building committee that also had their certification.
Not necessarily in connection with the permanent building committee, but.
I can think of three on that, on that committee that do have the certification because of their full-time jobs.
Right.
Right?
And Christine does and she, and the town administrator is.
Yeah, and then I'm just saying, but not off-time administrators are required to have.
Exactly.
So if Christine leaves and someone else comes in, they don't have it.
Right. I think that's.
You have, you can't look at the position, you have to look at the roads.
I, I agree, that's.
So is that something that we might want to recommend or, because it's not necessarily. True, I mean, how difficult is it to get?
Uh, you know, it, it.
It takes a certain amount of certification.
It's, it's training and then this next thing. But, I mean, so.
It's an honor, but if you ended up being a building committee could potentially. Because of however they're. You know.
I mean, I, I do see it in here. So it's, it's a mass general law C7. Be, which will protect the, it will protect the town by saying that they have to have a certified.
And this is not, I just want to say, this is not an argument specifically about Michael being on here.
I know, I'm just saying, if you're looking.
Like what positions need to happen specifically to the school building. Yeah.
And, and you're looking at this two routes or two roads you can take. One of them is going to require that you have something. That's all, that's all.
So it also seems like practically, it's required that you have somebody just to even take it on yourself.
Just, just after process.
Okay, uh, Tim and then Anna, is that okay? Or was Tim, Anna, did you have a hand?
Well, I just. I'm not, it's not clear to me how for the non-voting members would the appointed members of the SBC, you know, kind of be, they're appointed. To get together in a room like this and they say, hey, we can have up to three non-voting members and then they, it's up to them to decide. And I don't, I'm not calling that out because I, I generally, I think. Less, less control over how that committee operates is a positive.
Yeah.
I think more, you know, more the committee kind of gets aligned on what they want to do. But I just, is, is that the. It's open-ended how those three members would be asked to join, you know, they're effectively being asked to join all the meetings. I don't know. Did anyone, is that?
I think it's always usually ex officio members on most committees.
Okay, and they would just determine where they, that's up to the, the SBC once it's formed.
Well, no, it's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw.
So it's required, you know, in the bylaw, these people, you know, will be appointed to the committee.
So that is the part four, so it's the town. And then I think what you were saying, such addition.
Okay. Yes, Anna. Thank you.
Hi, so nice to see you. I'm sorry it took me a while to kind of connect the dots. First of all, so I actually had something prepared to say at my town, town meeting.
As did I.
Um, I hadn't discussed it with anyone. But first of all, I appreciate all the work that has gone into it. So. And I was going to speak as a member of school committee, but not officially and my experience with the SBC. And I suppose after reflection and. I was going to request that this get tabled until the next meeting. One, for the reasons of. I was really, really hoping that all the lessons learned from the last experience. And the desire I felt that more collaboration and more working together. Would be of value getting this project completed. So. Although I appreciate all the work that went into the bylaw, I would really want to have a sit-down, a workshop, what have you. And I think having the meeting postponed was a little blessing in disguise. Now we're able to have this conversation. But in terms of the bigger conversation, having it not just warrant committee, a bylaw member, but also permanent building committee members present. I feel that there is a wealth of knowledge there and. You know, if the moderator has a stake in this, the moderator there, so we're all understanding what our goals are and what the pros and cons. If we do pass this legislation. So. This is a great beginning, but I'm really hoping that we can get the other committees together to really flesh this out before we. You know, make this permanent. So that is my.
Steve, can you tell me a little bit about the process right now? Because I, I met with a member of the selectmen yesterday. Just to kind of discuss a lot of things and their impression was that. And, and this sounded a little odd to me, that. The. The plan was to bring this to town meeting. Uh, on Monday, voted through and then wordsmithed at the next meeting, which felt like a tough. At a, at a meeting which will be so focused and should be focused on the, on the hospital.
Sorry, you're saying to, to vote this through and then wordsmith it after.
It sounded odd, so I wasn't sure if that was indeed the. The process. So if you can kind of let me know what's going on there.
Say some light on this. So we had, we had a very lengthy warrant committee meeting last week. And representatives from the school building committee, bylaw review committee.
Yeah. It's.
And there were four of them there and we also had Scott McDermott there. Before warrant committee, Mark Sorrell. And we spent, I just got done doing the minutes for that meeting. We spent a lot of time.
Was that the one I was at?
Yeah.
After town.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This Saturday.
Actually.
No, no, this was.
Wednesday.
It was Wednesday, Jess was there.
Okay.
And so. You know, we came into that meeting with, I believe, sort of a. There was disagreement on what to do with the article, I would say. Certain members had problems with certain aspects of the article. Other members. You know, as, as with everything the warrant committee does, you try to get to a consensus of positive motion. You know, on the, you know, to introduce an article on the floor. And so. There was a desire to do that, to, to, if we could reach a consensus with. The committee that wrote the bylaw, we wanted to. And, and so we went through. We went through a, a very lengthy discussion about. Edits and comments that. It's, and Sharon had Gus's comments.
And, and we've got these here too.
And we went through them all. And, and certain members had strong feelings on certain things. I would say that. That there were probably two areas where we had issues. That people felt strongly about. There were, as with everything, there are preferences that everybody had, right? And then there's what could we live with, right? And all with the concept of trying to get to a positive motion.
Right.
To, because I think there was a feeling that. We, we do need to come together and move forward and. Time's not on our side, you know, here. So we want, we wanted, if we could, to, to reach that consensus. So I think the two, the two big issues that we, we struggled with were. There were certain members of our committee that felt very strongly about the age 65 requirement. And then we had a lengthy discussion about that. And, and then the other one was probably the one that we felt. I was, it was probably most, most agreement on amongst our committee. Was the representation by the permanent planning building committee on this, this new SBC. You know, sort of forcing that requirement into the, the language. Was very, very strong agreement on that. And I think that probably. For, speaking for myself, I wouldn't have supported it if that, if that change didn't make, didn't happen. So I think. From a process perspective, after all of this sort of back and forth on. Wordsmithing and edits and changes to the language. We didn't want to overwhelm. The edits. We wanted, we didn't want to confuse the town meeting.
Yeah.
Which, so there was, there was an intentional effort to, to try to minimize them. As to what people, what members could agree with and accept as opposed to what their preferences were. And, and so. But the, the, where we ended up was. That. We voted on a positive motion to accept the article as written in the printed warrant. Except for certain edits. And so the motion that, that we voted on and got passed. Will have, gonna have, I think you have the edits. There'll be a. There'll be a. There will be a.
There's a red line.
Up, up on the screen, they're gonna project these edits.
Yeah.
So everybody will be able to see them. They'll be read out loud.
Right.
And that will be the positive motion.
So, and just.
So.
That's the Article 14 redline in the package?
Yeah.
That, that's the.
The handout.
With the exceptional.
Yes, exactly.
So that, I just want to.
I have.
No, I mean, we sent the, the handout, the, that you guys gave out at a town meeting.
Okay.
Which.
Okay, it was a handout.
And there was.
Right, that's it. So that will be. So we have slides that will mirror what they handed out, that will be projected. They'll actually be read, the motion will be read to, to, you know, each go through each one of those. And that will be the part, the positive.
The positive motion at that point.
From the warrant committee.
Okay, so there is no plan to then push some part of this. To the next town meeting. Because that was what this, this member had very specifically said, that we would just vote this and then if there were problems, we would deal with it at the next meeting.
Was it a member of our committee or?
No, no, it was a select.
I mean, that's what I just described is where things ended up. Before we. Before we walked up to the table at town meeting.
Right.
You know, we had a pre-meeting and, and, uh, everything was, and I, I don't expect it to change, um, uh, but, um.
And I think the, another part of our conversation was, we thought about. Waiting till June town meeting, but they were very clear.
Yeah.
That it might not happen. But so if it doesn't, then you've pushed off.
And legally, we could still form an SBC without the bylaw.
I technically did talk about that and I, I believe you're correct. I think that, that's how it got done last time. We didn't have this bylaw, so the selectmen, um, you know, moved forward and, and appointed, made the appointments.
Right.
So.
Clarify.
Right.
That if it does not pass, or you know, what have you, if something could still be formed. And perhaps with the spirit of the intent of all parties coming together, how can we make this a success? How can we work together? I'd really love to hear what permanent planning committee think of this.
I think that right now in this meeting, I'd really like to focus, and I think that that's noble, but the permanent planning committee. Can also have a meeting in my, uh, the agenda for this, or I mean, it's agenda for Article fourteen. But I think that they can, they can advocate for themselves. But if we have this go forward.
This is really, this needs to be thoughtful, and I'm not saying it wasn't thoughtful. But I'm, I really feel strongly that all parties need to come together, so that's all I'm expressing. You know, board of select, you know, the whole lot, everybody that's mentioned in the article. And, you know, plus everyone who feels passionately about this, so that we can come to a consensus. So that we can go forward with the spirit of collaborating and let's work together. We're gonna just, you know, shed all the negativity and just move forward because we want this school.
Which is, I'm right there with you, however, I also think that. We need to have a discussion about what it is within the article. That the school committee has concerns about, and that's where I'd like to kind of go right now. Because I also need to know. I need to. I need to know that. If town meeting just decides to pass this anyway, and they don't feel as strongly about. People coming together and process, how can we then have input around the things that we would find problematic? In terms of really being able to have it educationally and community sound. Um, article for the school committee, right, so that there's, there's the what we want, but how do we also help? If what we want does not happen, how do we make sure that? The interests of the schools and the parents are protected within this, right? Or are included within this, because I know that we are inclusive of an older member of the community. But essentially, um, there is no protection around making sure that there are. Uh, younger members of the community within this, or people who would really have skin in the game around being. A parent who are in the educational system right now, because, you know, some things like the language that we talk about. In that we say, uh, that. That, um. What is it? It's pertinent. Educational experience if possible. But then again, what is pertinent educational experience? We find somebody who is, somebody who, uh, is a great community organizer. Who has deep roots in the younger and older or mid section of the demographic. That that person has no educational experience, that might be considered if challenged pertinent.
Right.
Right, so it's that there's specificity, there's specificity, sorry. There is, I think, one of the things that's a little concerning, so how, how within the town meeting? Would we be able to? Correct that if this, if this looked like it were going to be brought forward and there was not. A positive motion to table until June, because we don't know what that meeting's gonna happen, and we certainly don't want to have it. Delayed for another year, or even six months.
So Jess, my question is, is linked, so just, I just want to see, so Steve, you guys, um, redlined it based on Wednesday, which I. Then did the SBC formation committee review and accept that or is that? Have you, you've also accepted.
We, we, both committees have accepted these. So we have agreement between their committee and our.
High level Jess, I think you're saying, and it's, this, this is the conversation we don't want to get to. What is it that we can limit, right? Is there anything in here that's expected, you know, we don't like? And then the question is, if we came up with something, is it too late between now and Monday? That, that's just the way, because it is interesting that, and I'm happy that you edited it. You adjusted some of the language and you accepted it. So just as last Saturday, you, you met and, you know, kind of came up with it. Is this final, final, or if he came up, I, I think.
I think we would have to amend it from the town floor.
You'd have to make an amendment from the floor, right?
Right.
And, and I would say, um, so, so maybe we want to revisit the topic. Or I would say, well, why?
Because that's where, I think that what we're kind of dancing around here is that, um. For whatever reason, two of the committees that would be most affected by this were not. Contacted, asked to present, asked to, and I understand that's probably in the point of haste and kind of in the point of. Not, and just assuming that we would reach out or, but. Uh, in any case, it wasn't like. We weren't available or wouldn't put it on an open meeting, it's simply that we weren't contacted, and that's usually the way things go. Within, you know, we're handed a draft that we see before it hits the warrant and all of our mailboxes, and we are allowed to have input. To that as a formal process, not as kind of like one or two of us show up at a meeting and maybe have some process. And that is gone and done, and I'm not particularly interested in that at this point unless we choose. To, or somebody within the town says. We can't do this. I would so much prefer to work with what we have right now, but that is my personal opinion, simply because I don't. Want, as Tim so frequently says, massive churn, right? Two committees and a board have come together and said. You know, this is what we think is the best option. I think that my perspective at this point is that this, this is what we have. It has been, there is consensus amongst people that we understand, admire and appreciate, and we appreciate the labor. Now we want to simply make some tweaks that will make this article, which in all likelihood. Unless we really push. And I don't want, I don't necessarily want to do that, I, and that's just my opinion. How do we make this so that it works in the best way possible for the constituency of the people who are most concerned with education? And our population, right, like not ours, I mean, it's. We are represented as the entire town, but it would be disgenius to say that we were not representatives. Of the children and the parents and guardians of, you know, mental health schools too. So how do we make the portion of our. Appointees the. Best fit and the, get the most input from the entire community there. That's kind of where I am, like, I could go for. And we could decide, we're just going to, we could technically say, stand up and say, we have so many. Concerns about this that we think it should be tabled. I don't know if that would be what the community, or the committee would say. Or if we try to make a motion, if we decide that that's important in this meeting. To change some of the language here to make it something that would work going forth. So I wanted to make sure that there wasn't any actual official idea that we'd be wordsmithing at, at the hospital meeting, should it happen. Which is kind of, seemed odd to me. But then we can decide these two larger things, the two, do we just work with what we have and bring amendments? That we communicate far and wide, as much as we can, as much as the warrant committee or the, uh, building committee was able to. Last Saturday and through Monday to the final draft that we kind of all got on Monday or Sunday afternoon. Or do we push a little harder? I don't know. I'm asking the, the committee that. But we need to decide kind of where our path is, so I think this is where we kind of work with the process.
On, so the school committee will appoint four voting members to the SBC, two appointments will be current school committee members, because the terms are not.
Which is also another.
Right, so I guess I'm curious on the kind of underlying logic of that, because that does seem to prohibit.
It, it makes.
Possibly putting forward the two people who might be either the best suited or.
Yeah, our, our worry was, uh, school projects go so long, we didn't want to, you to point to who then. Their termins, at the same time you have two new people to get up to speed.
Yeah.
So we were trying to figure out a word that would be, I mean, you, you're asking. For who's representing the schools, the kids, the public, that's, that's you guys. There's two of you on this committee, and that is your role. And, um, we just didn't, you know, we kept thinking about, we weren't, I guess we didn't really think about the fact that. Your two people might just happen to be ru- running on the same term.
Right.
It was more that we didn't want two people to be on for two years and then be off. And then two new people get on and have to get up to speed in the middle of a building project. Maybe that's one of the things that I felt like. It was a little over prescribed, you know, like the, each committee has to have some level of. Trust from the rest of the town that we would be able to manage our own labor, right, and our own assignments. So I, I kind of felt like that was solving a problem that would not. Exist, you know, because we do that all the time, and, you know, we all have, it's, it goes two years, one year, two years. Or I'm sorry, two positions, one position, two positions. And we rotate positions all the time to make sure that we do have that overlap. And make sure that people, you know, that we're not left hanging, or if there's any kind of concern about that. You know, we, we make plans for that, so I, I think that honestly, that could be.
At least three years.
So that was the only, the reason that.
I mean, I, I can only speak for myself.
Yeah.
But that, if that, if those words were to be deleted, like for example, you wanted to propose an amendment to strike. Whose terms are not co-terminists and just, and sentence.
Yeah.
I personally.
Wouldn't have.
If, if that's how you want to do it, I think that's fine, uh, but I can't speak for everybody.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Yeah, and then, uh, just in terms of. Pertinent experience in education. I, I think that, again, it makes it too. It kind of removes the, the judgment. So it gives you per, like, and yet it makes, it removes the school committee's judgment, and yet at the same time. It makes it more challengeable, right? Somebody could stand up and say, I don't think Michelle Kirkby has pertinent experience if she were a private citizen. In education, because she's only been on the PTO, right? Or, but she doesn't have a graduate degree, or she hasn't been in, you know, like, so that there's.
Yeah.
So much prescription there, it's less prescriptive than say, if you're an architect. You need a license, right? If you're a building project manager, you need a license, does this person need a. You know, a teaching license, do they need to have some sort of degree, is it? It becomes that kind of slippery slope around. What that means.
More conflict and casualties, because they're gonna be a complex and.
The judgment.
The way that person.
Of the committee may actually.
I don't think.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I don't have that requirement to be on the school committee.
Right, so you wanted to just say two men, two other people.
Two members. Residents that are appointed by the school committee, and I feel like we should, as Jess said, there should be some trust. In the people that you elect, that we will have the, you know, the schools and education in mind when we're picking our appointments.
Much as the, you know, the permanent. Planning, building committee would have, you know, you've got prescriptions there, what they need to be, because that's quite important. But. But you don't have to, it, it's not like you're.
It's, I, I'm conflicted on, because I, I do really recognize it's, if possible. One more reason for somebody to raise their hand and say, I don't think this was done correctly, look at what the bylaw.
And then even if possible.
One second, on principle, I'd say we don't have that requirement to be a part of the school committee.
Right.
Maybe we should, but we don't today.
I would agree with you that you, you want a variety of background to school committee, um, I think the piece was more that. We didn't want all appointing authorities to appoint all architects. Right, and so, because a good, uh, a complete building committee, if everybody's an architect. Who's got the voice, right? Of education, so it was sort of like, we were looking at all the possibilities, again. I'm speaking now, but obviously the whole committee's not here, so it was, you need some architects, you need builders, you need some people who understand education. You need some people in the warrant committee, you need someone with a master plan in town, energy con, so it was just sort of a. Plethora of.
You know, in its entirety, after looking at each. Will have at least two with experience here. I think the role of the dicees will have it. But it would eliminate the, you must, you know.
One of the things we've done, I think, when the edits we made, some of the other sections will use language like rather than will be. Endeavor to.
That became my line. Because if possible, makes it so that you have to actually eliminate a candidate. Right, and replace it with somebody else, if they have educational experience, if the person doesn't. Because it's always going to be, if possible, to try to.
A endeavor to, we might say, pros versus cons, Rex is a really great community builder.
Yeah.
In spite of them, you know, and they've done amazing things with Net Zero. And, you know, not that we have an, an Net Zero agenda for, but, you know, for whatever.
Yeah.
I would actually prefer that. It, it just. I'm a little scarred from the prior one.
We all are, and I think.
So, but I, I think more open ended.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, this is just a bit too prescribed, and I'm sure the spirit is there. Are scarred, and, uh, we just want to be sure, we're a school committee, we know who. We know who we want to represent us, if, if they can, if they want to, that's gonna be another job to find people who actually want to do this.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we have to be very, um, honest about that, that this is going to be difficult to fill. So I think, um, school committee having, you know, using our experience to choose.
You know, if there is somebody who is boots on the ground in a specific school that you were looking at changing. And, but has no educational experience technically, but maybe a parent is incredibly involved. That, that person I would find to be very helpful. You know, somebody who's been on the site, committee council or something, you know, like, has previous experience, but does not necessarily have a. I think that that's kind of been my. Say, just so you're clear, it doesn't say anything about having a teaching degree. No, 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 it doesn't, but, but there's always that like pertinent and if. No, no, it's broad, but it needs, it, it, in its broadness, it actually ends it making it a little bit more challengeable. Because somebody is always going to have a different idea about what pertinent is, somebody's always going to have a different idea about if possible, right? So do we eliminate multiple candidates who will be very qualified because one of them has. Who will be very qualified, because one of them has.
So are we proposing that we, on the floor, perhaps?
I think we'll have to do it on the floor.
You know, um, get rid of the word co-terminus, and just two additional appointments will be metro residents, period? Are are we gonna, that's what I would go for.
I would.
Yeah.
I agree. Uh, the most important thing, now, I apologize, I have a hard stop at ten thirty. But the most important thing, I think, to pull forward, regardless of the bylaw, just in our thinking, is what everyone is saying here, and that is a variety. Of experiences that allows the appropriate input into the process and the learning through that process. So that's just just mentioned. Someone may not have any experience with buildings, or even in schools, but allow them to, you know, they're invested in the schools, they're. Got children in the schools, and they wanna see the best for the, you know, for the town, and allow them to go through the learning process. Of what goes into a building project, you know, it's extremely complex, and there's a lot of moving parts. Um, but the most important items as being one of those people who has been a non-voting member on numerous building projects and schools. Is having the facilities and the IT folks in there for that input that is just in time. Um, and because this, there's a lot of things that get overlooked, like a phone system was forgotten in two of the building projects I worked on. Uh, Newton North High School, one of the most expensive high schools ever built in the state. Uh, didn't have any custodial closets on any of the floors to clean the school, so they had to. Had to add them afterwards, and that was because the facilities person was, you know, not a part of the process. So little details like that, uh, could go a long way and ended up, you know, having that input there to make sure that those things exist. And those inputs are there, uh, because everybody's got a different approach to when they're looking at that building. You know, if I'm a teacher, I'm looking at where the cubbies are, and in the room, and how it's gonna function. Uh, and where my kids are gonna stand in the morning. The principal may say, when they come into the building, what's it gonna look like? So all these experiences all blend together to come up with the experience, uh, you know, that we produce at the end, and it's important to have. Um, you know, those different mindsets and those different people coming in, community members to come in and look at that experience, right? And, um, to see that process in action, uh, because it is a complex and a very long process, so. That is my two cents, and I will leave it there.
Thank you, Leo, for your two cents. I appreciate it. Yeah, well, there was.
I was asking, and I, like, I was trying to get caught up, and that's what I'm saying, like, the overarching, so like, whenever it's. Like, you started with some things.
Um, and and I may, so so in doing this, it may give an excuse. To just kind of. Put this forth without then having the larger conversation. If the bylaw were passed, but then all of the. Committees came together immediately after that and had kind of procedural. Conversation about what, what might happen at the higher level, when, because there's policy, and then there's procedures that enact that. You know, if we talk about. Uh, you know, if there is an SBC that comes together, do the appointing authorities then. Consult with each other to make sure before that full SBC is appointed. You know, is it our kind of written in procedure that we come together to make sure that we have that wide range? Of people, right? That's procedural as opposed to.
Yeah.
Policy or bylaw. So do we kind of come together, understanding that that would be the procedure, and that that could get written into part of the.
I think that goes back to the citizen petition as well, to ensure that diverse representation is on the committee. I think you must need to have that, to make sure that we are encompassing all these different things that your committee has so thoroughly thought about. But we wanna make sure that of the representation is there in regards to what we have going forward for our next SBC. Does that sound reasonable to you?
I mean, my hope would be that that the appointing authorities would talk to each other and, uh, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a procedural thing, right? We don't necessarily have to encapsulate it by laws.
I don't think it needs to be a bylaw, personally.
No, I don't think so. I I think that's one of those best practices.
Yeah.
But is this also the only bylaw of its kind in the entire state?
Uh, I will have to talk to Mark Sorrell about that, I do not know. I mean, there are a couple of questions.
That is either kind of really.
No, it's not.
Dictating what the SBC should look like.
Well, I think.
Oh, well, that's, um, I'm sorry.
Yeta.
I can ask Mark, or I can kind of do research, um, but we can take a look at what. Bylaws exist out there, I'm sure that.
We did your, your research thoroughly. Yeah, we had research of other. School building committees.
Mm-hmm.
Right, how to form, what you do, and that kind of piece. We also, just to be clear, too, we had public input for those who wanted to. We had emails, and we had our first, we had an open, you know, hearing session with people coming to, so.
We've tried that.
Yeah, so I mean, because those are really our concerns. So there there are other bylaws that kind of, no, not kind of, that dictate whether the SBC should.
Yeah, for how to set it up and get it started, yeah.
Um, so we're we're saying at a high level. On Monday night, there's gonna be a motion from the floor, and our motion from the floor is going to be to modify the bylaw.
Just, yeah, to strike.
Asking at least the committee to say, would it be possible? To consider that modification and vote on it, so we don't even have to.
Well.
One more question, Carolyn, and so in, in your research, sorry.
No, no, just go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Do you have a minute to think about it?
It's in your research, um, for this bylaw, um, were, um, SBCs, um, school committee. Select boards, town, everyone had equal footing in terms of, or were school committees given maybe. A little bump because it's a school and they need.
I honestly couldn't tell you, like, how many of what.
Yeah, no, I just wonder the process.
Right, so that, in that part, you know. We spent a lot of time talking about what we thought would be broad enough to make.
Mm-hmm.
Community feel it was inclusive of a lot of people, and that. There were many problems late nineties, two thousand two, ten, with who was appointing the people to. The permanent building committee or school building committee, and it was always a power struggle. Um, and so part of this was to try to eliminate the power struggle. And just say, three authorities, four each, twelve people, and, you know. Try to get out of the politics of it and into the, let's actually, you know, get the.
Okay.
That feeling, so. Yeah.
That's good to understand.
Yeah, that's where, that's where we really all came from, and then we got caught up, uh, if anybody does. Coming with the nitty gritties of how do you word it, how do you say it, and who does what, and which people, and how do you. We didn't wanna prescribe, but we wanted the committee to be broad and experienced, they're right. Like Leo said, because I've been in education forty years, I can't tell you how many projects I've been involved in, and. Some of the silliest things that were built.
Yes.
Because nobody who used the building was on the committee, like, no. Um, classroom teachers or people, or custodian, people who say, this wouldn't work, right? So. We were trying to make it broad, and that's why, you know, for you guys, we were trying to get some people who would say, no. I taught a lot of years, and this wouldn't work, that kind of thing, so.
I understand, and I and I do have to say, oh, no, actually, Steve, I want you to say.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, to Tim's, uh, Tim's question about, you know. I think I know where you were going with this, it's like, so you've you've kind of identified two, two edits to the school committee language. Um, and you've talked about potentially doing a, a motion from the floor. And again, I'm not speaking for your committee or my committee, it's my personal opinion. These don't appear to me to be significant changes, and. And, um, we, I know we have a meeting scheduled, our committee. At six o'clock before, um, the, uh, the town meeting on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know about you, but, um.
Sure, we do this one, because we we did it last month.
Yeah, but if there's a way, I mean, if, my point is, if there's a way to get consensus between three committees, um. If it makes sense. Put on, uh, as a positive motion.
Mm-hmm.
I would be, I would support that. I mean, I think that that would be, you know, very helpful, you know, rather than confusing, more confusion. Now, it does require a little more effort on our parts to make that happen, but.
Mm-hmm.
So is posting today count, because it's the weekend, forty eight, forty eight?
No. You'd have to, you would have had to post it by, um, Thursday night at six.
And you guys have some.
Unless.
You have, you have it posted, right? You have it posted? I know, we have it posted.
So you you can conceivably say, the warrant committee recommends.
Yeah, we, I, I don't wanna speak for anyone else. But.
Well, I mean, I can also.
We could, we could, you know, um. We could, in our motion, include these edits, I guess.
But I'm just saying, rather than somebody writing.
We would wanna know that your committee agrees.
Yeah, so since we can't meet.
Yeah.
But I, but we, I can just put the information out and invite. Bylaw committee to your meeting to hear you discuss.
Yeah.
The suggestions you heard today, and at least then it's not off the floor confusion.
Right.
Right?
Right.
And then. If you make a motion to include two other edits. At least the bylaw committee can hear it. We can't, we can't, we can't vote or anything.
Right, right. Then we'll be up to the moderator to say to you that, uh, or someone, uh, or we'll be from the floor.
Yeah. I mean, I will be communicating that, that which comes out of this meeting to every kind of. Pertinent realization. I told Bob that I would send it to him, I'll talk to Mark about it, I'm gonna send it to Sharon, I'll send it. To, you know, kind of all, I'll send it to Scott, to kind of talk about what our vote. To be, you know, what, what we feel will be best, and we'll vote on it, we'll construct it in a way. But, so everybody would kind of know. But I don't know how it will be voted on, and I guess that's part of the kind of like.
Yeah.
Kind of process about how people feel.
Yeah, I mean, I think keeping them simple and and very short is the best approach. Um, so striking words is always easy.
Easy.
Um. And on that last sentence, I, I mean, I know. Uh, Sarah has a, has a, she has a knack for editing bylaws and the.
Phenomenal.
She might have some suggestive wording to.
I think actually, um. Again, not speaking for the committee, but, um. You could just take, be current two school committee members, period. That's why I'm not the last clause with whose, and then a two additional appointments will be metro residents, and you could. Put the period there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, these are two pretty easy strikes, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I I would be willing to sort of bring that to our committee. Talk to Sharon and perhaps bring that to our committee for discussion and a vote, and, um. You know, and that, that could be part of the the motion that we make, uh, you know, it's something to prove it, so.
Do the selectmen have a, a meeting scheduled for that six P M. time as well?
Believe they do, yeah.
Okay, but because they.
They've vote, they've already voted to dismiss it.
Yeah, right, so I can't ask them to vote on. An arti- a change to an article that they have already decided to dismiss.
Correct, they would have to resend their vote.
Okay, so I'm not even going there, so it would be essentially just one of the warrants.
Yeah, I mean, they don't seem to me to be significant, and Scott is always concerned with major changes.
Right, right.
What is printed in the warrant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I I I think you would go along with them too.
I I think the only reason I brought it up, e- even the perception of it, literally from the floor and changing on the.
Yeah.
At least there's some, to say, this is what we'd like, you could see it.
Yeah.
It's easier to comprehend, um, to be a little wide today, exactly where are we? You know, did it change since last Saturday? That's what, what I wasn't sure. Think about all the residents. Who are following, and so who we are.
Right.
Right, right, yeah.
I I think, you know, either whatever happens, I'm comfortable with the conversation. I I'm not sure, yes, I don't think we're voting on anything.
We would be voting, I believe, and please, Rayan, um, we would be voting to bring. Uh, or to bring to, uh, the warrant committee. The suggestion that they strike. Um. Do we bring it to the warrant committee, or do we simply say that the school committee recommends, and then that's, then it happens however.
Yeah, I was just saying, maybe you just wanna vote that, that these, these are suggested edits.
Yes.
And then, um, you know, I can't, we don't know if warrant committee will accept it technically, and that leaves you room to do a motion.
Right, you could, you could make it.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
You can make it a little stronger by saying that you are making a vote that you would. Um, support the warrant article with.
With these two amendments.
Two additional edits.
Yeah.
Two additional edits, I would say, not amendments, but edits.
Mm-hmm.
And that lets everyone, because I don't think you wanna give the impression that. Someone could make the edit you wanted, still go no, that that would frustrate everybody, right?
I mean, we'd be a little frustrated anyway, but it, but yes, I mean, we would, we would just work with it.
So that would be your motion, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you would approve Article fourteen with these two additional edits. And it would just be eliminating words.
Mm-hmm. Uh, how can I take a survey of how the committee would feel about that motion? Michelle, it looks like she's got tight lines, worried mouth.
I'm still, I mean, echoing what Anna said, I do feel like there needs to be a bigger discussion around this, so I support. Like, the school committee piece, but whether I support the whole thing, I still.
That's right.
I feel like in even more time, but, and I don't feel like. I don't know, this is.
Nobody's asking us for our opinion on the article. We're simply asking. That in the case that this article should be passed, that these two edits. Would be considered.
It's interesting, and very clever. It is interesting that. You know, so the school committee is requesting that they make these edits.
Right, and then if it doesn't pass, or we're not recommending that it pass, because we have no place within that recommendation. It's simply that if it passes. Or whatever version does pass, should it pass, we ask for these two edits. To our. And we can make that. Clear. You know, that, that this is not a motion to approve the articles, uh, approve the warrant article itself. It's simply a motion to ask for these specific edits.
Yeah, I think that.
To be considered.
Yes.
Me, um. I know we've had most of the discussion, most of the discussion has been on this particular paragraph.
Yeah.
You know, to your point, you you sound like there are other issues that maybe we haven't spent that much time talking about.
And I'm not sure that we, we have much to weigh in about that, actually.
But if we can help, um, with your understanding of those, you have the benefit of the two of us here.
Yeah.
You know, going to help.
Yeah.
It helps you.
I'm just, I am confused as to what are the other pieces that here. Uh, worrying about, Michelle, do you have a concern? Thank you, just for the record, uh, Tim Knight will not be, uh, voting on this, and he's leading the meeting, but he's participating in the discussion. Um. Was it, uh, Michelle, were you concerned about the size of the. Two thirty, so it wouldn't be a quorum, and then a quorum could decide. Any vote, but indeed, you would have to have, for minutes or anything else, you would have to have all twelve voting members there, and eight of them would have. To vote for almost all. Uh, decisions, right? Am I, am I thinking that's incorrect?
To me, that's just the majority, that's seven, and then for a vote, you would need eight.
You need more than eight, and you have to have eight.
Eight for the vote to pass.
All be positive, right, like, so.
Right.
So you would have to have seven as a quorum, which couldn't do anything in a quorum.
But you could, you could meet and discuss, I mean, you don't vote every time you're together, right?
That's true, but but actually, it should be, because minutes and, you know, things like that.
Minutes, yeah.
So. You would need to have all twelve, or at least eight of your members, and at least eight of those members who were present would have to vote in the affirmative to. Accept any kind of decision-making, be it procedural and regular, and just kind of S O P, or. The bigger decisions, and I, and I think that that, again. I, I think that that's a larger issue. I, I think that that's a larger issue with the, with the article itself. I'm not sure how much. That I think that that could be a kind of a. That would be a very difficult bar to meet each and every time. But again, that's, that's the people who come up with it.
The way we thought about, or at least I thought about it was that, uh. The two thirds is 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 the bar at town meeting for this, to any particular school. So if the committee can't get there, then maybe we shouldn't be moving forward.
Which is true. I think that the two thirds, like, there is a. There are decisions that are more important and decisions that are less important.
Right.
More important decisions, you know, if you're going to run into an open meeting law complaint because. You haven't been able to get all twelve very busy people in the same room to be able to get an eight. Positive vote motion for minutes. You know, over three meetings, then you're kind of in the doghouse. It makes your, it makes things like that just a lot harder. Operationally, but that's, that's going to be the chair's headache and not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
So that's one of those things where I don't feel like I need to vote on it, but it's probably worthy of.
I mean, I look back at the prior SBC and I think almost all their votes are unanimous.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they very rarely had a.
Yeah.
I can't think of any, but, um.
Yeah, and it's just about, you know, again, uh, bylaws are probably meant to be thought of in. What I call textual vacuum, like they need to be in context, but they need to be a vacuum, you know, in terms of what we. We're looking for like building from the beginning of what we want, not what happened before and not what we don't want. We don't want it to be built on a deficit model, so. It just seems like that might be tough for the chair, but that's not, again, that's the chair's issue, not mine. Mine is unlikely, I would ever be chair of them. So, um, but I do think it's, you know, just in terms of operations, that can make things a little hard.
Yeah, I I agree.
But that'll be there.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm thinking behind that particular.
I I same thing that for the most part. The only committee is pretty unanimous when when they're doing things and. You don't need twelve people there, you just need eight people there to take.
But it also presupposes that everybody, you know, one of the interesting points about the conversation I had. Uh, yesterday, I think you were talking about the warrant committee coming to a consensus and that that is considered like a, a good. Thing, that's how you, and we are frequently, uh, frequently come to a consensus around what we would like to do. But this member that I was speaking to said, I think it's really important to have more people vote. Uh, against things. I think it's more important to stick to your, you know. More important in the long run to stick to your guns and say, I have a problem with this and I'm not going to come to consensus because I've said it. And so if that is in some ways the tenor of the way that we choose to do things and become more of a culture. Then that becomes a very hard, like, we're, again, we're making an assumption. That things will continue the way. They are, but that may not be true, right? There, there may be more of a cultural shift towards being more, uh, conflictual. And then you really opt out, you know, I mean, I think that that's. You have to look at it in all situations, but again. That's that chair's pain, not mine, but I do think it would be our pain in that. If it kept things from happening for our kids and for our school and a responsible way to be able to. Get a school built in a period of time in which the, we already noted that costs are going to be. So much higher for less of a project.
Right.
So we need to make sure that however these decisions are made, they're not made in haste, but they are made. In a sense of of trust and but not be, but no hurdles are being put over the simple decisions. When the larger ones could be much more difficult to process, please.
So, Caroline, thanks for all the work you guys did. I know it was a really short time period together and everyone's schedule is crazy. I was looking at your materials and had a really good analysis of M S B A data from public school, public records requests. And district data on makeups of SBCs. Would you guys get that?
Honestly, definitely have to go look at my computer and see then.
No, it's, it's really good information, really, and believe me. I'm not looking to be a voting member. I don't, I don't need the drama on that.
Yeah.
But but I will just share, based on the data you guys used, that forty one districts were listed, thirty. Allowed their superintendent to be voting members for willing to make a seventy three percent. Just throwing it out there again, I, because I remember that was with some sort of anomaly, remember that was a big anomaly, the superintendent vote?
Yeah.
It really isn't because statewide, it's seventy three percent on the status. Just want to show that.
Yeah, there are a lot that do, but, I mean. The superintendent, whoever he or she is, and comes to those meetings. They have a a strong voice because they're there all the time and they run the school, so, you know.
Well, like, you know, as you just mentioned, you know, there was never a, uh, vote that wasn't unanimous, so I think one vote out of nine or ten really. Didn't make a big difference in all that last time, but I totally understand why you don't want the superintendent to be a voting member. I get it, I just. Want to just share that it isn't as, um, rare as one would think it would.
No, it's not rare. It's more, it's really, you know, you get, it's more perception thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I have to say, go ahead.
Um, so back to where we were a few minutes ago in terms of how we're going to move forward as a school committee on this one. So, um, personally, I would, um. You know, vote to make the amendment, however, as an entire article, I am not in favor of this. I feel that, one, it's over prescribed. Um, we don't have any input from the permanent building committee and I think they bring a wealth of knowledge and experience. And I I respect their opinion, I respect what they do, I respect their time that they give to this community. And, um, and I believe that they offer a breadth of experience and just a a broader vision that I would really love to have seen. In this and, um, and as I mentioned earlier, an SBC can still be formed without this bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the way I understand it, and I haven't confirmed that with Mark Sorrell, but that's how I see it, so.
That's a school group policy that has it as well. It's, is there.
Yeah, so that just, I will just.
We can. Uh, again, nobody's asking for opinion about this article itself. Um, we can vote to make edits. And then simply. Say within that vote that it does not. Uh, that our request for edits does not imply that we support the entire article. Would that be reasonable? And I think. Leo?
He's gone.
He's gone. Oh, we better take a vote or everybody's gonna. All right. So, um. Okay, so for the the record, Leo is now.
He left a talk there.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, so what I would say is, do I hear a re- a motion? To recommend. Edits to, uh, section.
B one, one B one.
B one of ours.
One B one of article fourteen. To strike. From the sentence, two appointments will be current school committee members whose terms are not concurrent, strike the statement. Whose terms are not, I'm sorry, determinous. As well as to strike from the sentence, two additional appointments will be midfield residents. With pertinent experience in education, if possible, that we would strike the. Uh, phrase with pertinent experience in education, if possible. And our edits to, our vote to edit. Does not recommend or does not imply support of article fourteen. Could anybody second that motion?
Yes.
A so wrote by Anna May. Uh, and, uh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Michelle Kirkby. Uh, I will call for a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm gonna do a roll call because Leo was, uh, in Zoom or Zoom land, so that is remote. Um, so Jessica Riley, aye.
In the name of Shaker, aye. Michelle Kirkby, aye.
Michelle Kirkby, aye, okay. All right.
Jessica, I can answer the question just in case it comes up at the work.
And I, Anna will be happy to come to the.
Okay, that would be good, yeah.
Yeah. Assuming.
So. They might ask the question, do you, what is your position on the article?
The committee has not voted a position on the article. We have not done a dispositive position. I think that there was members.
All right, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
Right.
So the 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 vote was to make strikes to the language.
Edits.
But that does not imply that the committee as a whole supports.
Right, right.
Or has an opinion that supports it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's it's parsing, you know, I know, but it's also. It's the will of the committee, like, we we don't really have. We have, um, you know, skin in the game, but we don't have kind of a vote in the game, right? Like. We have been asked if.
You're neutral, if you will, I guess.
Uh, neutral with personal opinions.
Yeah, okay.
That we have discussed, but would not put forth as a vote.
Okay.
It's one of those.
Yeah.
And, uh, Caroline, I, I want to say truly. I understand. That the road to hell is paved with good intentions and on committee, all roads lead to hell. I know it is not easy and it's tough and when you have to do it fast, it's even tougher. And I, and I think that it was incredibly admirable that not only have you had, have you put forth a document. In the best faith you possibly could, you did it. To the point where we could actually even have conversations about it. That were scaffolded, that had, you know, that that had a reasonable. Kind of structured to them, right? Sometimes when people can have actual discussions about a document, that speaks to how well it's been written. As opposed to, you know, we're not having chaotic discussions around this, right? So I think that that speaks well to your, your committee's effort.
Take that back to them, if we meet again.
Thank you. Speak with Bob or, you know, email him later and kind of let everyone kind of in the sphere of influence know what we came up with.
Yeah.
Today, and I'm happy to attend meetings or whatever.
Okay.
Okay, I am going to, uh, ask if we hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle Kirkby seconds and, uh, we can take a roll call vote. Jessica Riley, aye.
In the name of Shaker, aye. Michelle Kirkby, aye.
Yes, so, uh, we had a, yeah, so our next meeting is scheduled for May ninth. As a placeholder, it's at six P M., six fifteen P M., I'm sorry. Um, if we have, uh, issues that we need to discuss about article eighteen or about the budget. Um, and we will, uh, cancel that meeting if it's necessary.
Cool, okay, yeah, I I have.
Yes, so, okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned at eleven, at ten fifty nine A M. Thank you, and please thank you so much. It's so helpful.